Welcome. On behalf of East Greenwich News and the East Greenwich Chamber of Commerce, welcome to the 2016 East Greenwich Candidates Forum. The East Greenwich Chamber is proud to help sponsor tonight's event. Executive Director Stephen Lombardi, however, could not be here with us tonight, but he does wish all the candidates good luck. Our thanks to New England Institute of Technology for hosting us, and to Lucas Anak Nostopoulos, a New England Tech student right back there who will be videotaping tonight. We will be sharing video links via social media, various websites, and through school and town emails. Also, thanks to the East Greenwich Pendulum, especially Gabby Paletta for your collaboration, and Bill Cosalino for colleague, who is our timer tonight. And thank you to everyone who submitted questions for tonight's event. While we are not able to use all of the questions submitted, we appreciate the wide interest in town affairs. Finally, thanks to the Civic Action Club at East Greenwich High School for their help in picking the candidate order of presentation tonight. And we remind you, they are hosting their own week of candidates tonight, next Wednesday, November 2nd, at 6:30 at Swift Joe. It had been a town hall, it has shifted to Swift Joe. Tonight's moderator, David Preston, grew up in Coeset and now lives in East Greenwich with his wife Jen. Both of their children have gone through East Greenwich Public Schools. A Marine Corps veteran, David is the founder and owner of New Harbor Group in Providence, and has over 25 years of experience in public policy, communications, and journalism, including serving as Governor Sunland's communications director. David is a member of the Rhode Island Bar and is involved in a number of volunteer activities. And with that, I'll hand it over to David.
I think the candidates, too, it's increasingly difficult to be a candidate and to serve in public office these days, and the issues are complex, the demands on your time are enormous, and if you're doing it right, you're casting votes that cause your neighbors and your friends to sometimes raise their eyebrows and sometimes ask you tough questions. So I thank you guys for running, serving, and being here tonight. So here's how it's gonna work. We've got nine folks, we don't have a lot of time, and so the first round will be a two-minute opening statement by each candidate. As Elizabeth said, the students from the high school picked the order, and that accounts for the randomness of this. And the second round will be a question that everyone will have one minute to answer. In the third round, there will be one question that will be specific to each candidate as we go down, and that question will be taken out of this bowl right here in front. During the course of that round, if a candidate, a different candidate, who the question was not directed to, feels strongly about that or feels that a point needs to be made, they'll have two opportunities to do that in the course of the debate. So it's kind of like the NFL, you get the throw the flag and make an appeal twice in the course of a game. And so that's how we're gonna do, and so without any further ado, I'd like to ask Nino Granatiero to start us off with a two-minute opening statement.
Good evening, everyone. I can hear you, Ben. Welcome. Thank you for attending tonight. My name is Nino Granatiero, I'm running for town council. Just to give you a little bit of background, and by the way, for those that are wondering, I'm 100% Irish. Just a little background.
I don't think that one's on. That might...
Go back to the island. I can't do this. Is that good? Okay. Thank you for mentioning that. Here we go. I couldn't improvise over there. My name is Nino Granatiero, I'm running for town council. Just a little bit of background. Rhode Island born and bred. Once you arrived, graduated as a chemical engineer in the NBA. My family and I have lived in East Greenwich for many years. I've got three children, two have gone through eighth or 12th in our grade system, and I've got a third grader at Eldridge. And by my calculations, I'm a class of 2004. And that's only three things. I play a lot of soccer games in this town. I take my fair share of party dog dances. And I know I'm getting old, 2006 is a pretty big moment. My wife and I are not only residents, we are business owners. We have a retail shop right down the street here in the plaza. They serve great. I know some of your customers, and I thank you for that. For those who have not gone, Friday and Saturday night, go to the tasting, they'll have a lot of fun. Career-wise, I spent 27 years in corporate, running corporations both internationally and domestically. I left that in January, spent more time with my family, and now do some of the traveling. I have a little manufacturing company, Warren. We make the inside components for yachts. It's a lot of fun, but more than that, I get to stay home. Last few months, a lot of questions. Why are you running for town council? Sometimes they're disbelieved, sometimes sarcastic, but always a great positive response. Answer's simple. I'm at a point in my life where I've got business experience, life experiences, parenting experiences. I love the town, I love it. I love being here, I've been growing up here. By nature, I like to help, I like to serve, and I'm at a point where I think I've got some skills and experiences that I can do. You'll find that I listen very well, understand problems, understand issues, solve problems, and get results. And that's what I promise I will do if I was running for town council. So I'm asking for your support, November 8th, for your permission to serve you, to serve the town. And again, thanks for coming tonight, and I'm taking part in this great process. Thank you.
Can you just make sure everybody can hear without the microphones?
They can hear.
Hello?
Yeah.
I think I can put it on the right.
I think we can turn the video camera off. So, do you have any...
You just might get the sound of the recording.
Just back out. I want to see your partner. Oh, I don't know. Look at that. I'm very loud.
You know, you can hear back here. You really can.
Okay. I think I'm loud enough. I feel like I'm about to give a best man's speech to myself, but here goes. My name is Pat Bristol, and I'm running for town council. I was raised in East Greenwich. My family's from East Greenwich. I'm the youngest of six. If you know any of the other Bristols, likely they're related to me, unless you don't like them, then they have nothing to do with me. We grew up on the hill. I lived on Rector Street. We made a giant move around the corner to Spring Street. I went K through 12 in the East Greenwich schools. I went to Eldridge, went to the junior high, went to the high school. Then I decided to break my mother's heart, left town, went to the University of New Hampshire, then I went to UConn Law. I was living in West Hartford with my wife Heather when we decided to start a family. And when we decided to start that family, we knew there was one place we would want to be, and that was here in East Greenwich. We moved back, we adopted our daughter Teagan. We've been here ever since. In town, I'm a volunteer with the baseball association, the soccer association, any of the other events that Heather drags me to at Hanaford and makes me volunteer for. Not to plug anything, but the Boo Bash is Saturday, we could use a hand, and if anyone wants to come, it's a great time. People have asked me the same question that they're asking Nino. Why are you doing this? My answer is pretty simple to start. I want to give back to a community that has given me a lot. I've been a part of this town for a long time, and this town has been a part of me for a long time. When I wanted to raise a family, I knew this is where I wanted to be, and we came back here. Next question is always, what would you do as a town council? And I think there are three important things to do. That's keep taxes low, keep our schools strong, investigate sources of revenue in order to do that, and develop businesses in the town. So I'm asking for your support on November 8th, and thank you.
Sam, is it easier for you to hear me, Sam? Can you hear it a little bit easier? Then we're gonna continue to stand. My name is Susie Yangi. I currently serve as the vice president of the town council in East Greenwich. For those of you that don't know, I've lived here for about 21 years. My husband Paul and I have raised five, yes, five children in the East Greenwich school system. So much like Pat, we've been to a lot of different things. Theater, soccer, tennis, all of that. During my service to East Greenwich, I first got involved by being a member of the school committee. When I was a member of the school committee, I chaired the school committee from 2006 to 2008. During that time, I was in charge of the Bond Passage, where we renovated all the elementary schools and the high school, and rebuilt Holmhill School. We also renovated all the fields. So that was my first experience in public service. The past two years on the town council, we've had a couple of initiatives that we participated in and have been quite successful in. One was making sure that we had our old pep funded. We also got two grants from the state to improve the waterfront and Main Street. We are currently repaving some of the roads in East Greenwich. It hasn't all gone that smoothly, but we're working on it. And as you'll see, there's another initiative to add another $5 million so we can get most of the roads done in East Greenwich. I'm a firm believer in volunteering for the school committee. And the school committee helped the school committee volunteering in town to get a lot of initiatives done. It has been an extreme pleasure of mine to work the past two years in a very collaborative effort with the five members at the town council and to work with the school committee. It's been a great pleasure. We helped a lot of other new initiatives that were... 15 seconds, I'm Irish! A lot of other initiatives that we'd like to accomplish. One is going paperless in the town, and the other is Sean Todd has spearheaded a mobile app in the town, so that's coming. It has been a great pleasure to serve on the town council, and my time is up, so I'd like your vote on November 8th. Thank you very much.
Can ladies stand behind their chairs as they speak going forward?
All right. So first off, I want to thank New England Tech for hosting this event tonight. I'd also like to thank the Chamber of Commerce, the East Greenwich News, the East Greenwich Pendulum for providing the residents in attendance tonight this opportunity to become informed more about us. So while we sit here or stand behind our chairs in front of you tonight, this evening isn't about us at all. It's truly about you, constituents. In my eyes, forums like this, that make our country great and allows us to work together throughout the democratic process. So my journey here actually started 31 years ago, when I was blessed to be born in the greatest town I've ever laid my eyes on. My parents were not elite, but they both worked the tremendous with the two-shooter in this community. And I can promise you all, I did not disappoint. I attended K through 12 in East Greenwich, played sports, and attended summer rep on every single field that you can imagine on a tiny little town. I met my daughter's mother in the hallway of East Greenwich High School, although I'll be at she is way out of my league still. And this is where we're raising our daughter Anna, who will be East Greenwich High School, class of 2032. As many people here in attendance know, my family has a history in politics here in the town. What a lot of people don't know is that I do with love. I've been volunteering on campaigns and political issues since I was five years old. I've been volunteering, I remember volunteering to help save the Kent County Courthouse, which is now our beautiful town hall. And I continue that legacy by being appointed to the board of directors on the East Greenwich Chamber of Commerce. This has allowed me to gain insight into the town's economic climate and help institute innovative changes to help improve an ever-evolving business landscape. And it's these experiences that give me the reason and the drive, but they also give me the experience to be a phenomenal town councilman. I love this town, I believe in venture crimson, and I cannot wait to be your next town councilman. I believe in you.
Thank you, Andrew. Yasha Reed.
Hello, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Yasha. I'd like to thank you all for coming out here, thank the East Greenwich Chamber of Commerce, Mr. Preston, Mrs. Dara, and Mrs. Formisato, as well as East Greenwich News and the Pendulum for bringing us out here. I'm 18 years old, and I'm a recent graduate from East Greenwich High School. And these other candidates here think they've been asked, "Why are you running for town council?" Oh, you're 18 years old and you're running for the first time. You've just graduated from high school. Trust me, you get asked that question every day from everyone. And there's a lot of things that I hope to accomplish while serving East Greenwich through the facet of town council. But I'd like to tell you guys some of my primary goals. Now, first, I'd like to work closely with the school committee. As someone who recently graduated from East Greenwich High School and knows the school system very well, rather than just what it's supposed to look like on paper, I believe that I know not only through my friends who are still in the schools and were still taking part in the system, but by looking and seeing what is actually happening now, rather than what happened in the past and what we hoped it to be, but rather looking at it through the facet of the actual student. And I hope to be able to further the relationship the town council has built with the school committee and progress our school system that way. Secondly, I'd like to look at our town's use of renewable resources and make sure that we lower our carbon footprint. Make sure that we hand off the town to both your children's generation and my generation in the same beautiful condition that it is in currently. Finally, I'd like to make sure that I can be both a role model and a voice to the young, to the kids, to the youth, and to the young adults who so often, and as you can see looking around you in the crowd, aren't represented in the East Greenwich community. I'd like to thank you all once again for coming, and I hope for your support on November 8th. Thank you.
Mike Zerola. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. My name is Mike Zerola. I have lived in East Greenwich since I was 16 years old. I love this town. When we and my wife ended up married and decided where we're gonna live, we decided on East Greenwich, because East Greenwich is a great community. What I want to do if I get elected is I want to preserve what we have here and enhance the town. I love East Greenwich, I love everything about it. I have three kids in the school system here. I have one that's in the middle school, I'm sorry, the elementary school, and I have two in the high school. As I come up to town, I see a lot of people asking questions. They want strong schools, and they want their taxes to be low. We have got to a point now where we celebrate we only raise the taxes too low. 90% of the income lies on people in residential housing. The residents pay all the taxes here. If I get elected, I'm trying to find a way to increase the base. We need to get more businesses here. We need to get businesses that have taxes, that pay tangible taxes, and we also gotta preserve what we have. And what I mean by that is we don't want Walmart, we don't want strip malls. There's three areas we can work on. The waterfront, Main Street, and the Route 2 corridor. The Route 2 corridor has a lot of land that is not being used right now that we can get good businesses here. We need to get businesses that are gonna come in, pay taxes. Maybe we could get it from 90% to 85% to 80%, where the taxes not being burdensome on the residents. Many people I've met, always walking the streets, have kids that are just graduating or about to graduate, and their biggest fear is they don't want to move out of East Greenwich after they have kids that don't want to here. I don't want to move out of East Greenwich after my kids don't want here. We need to expand the tax base. We need to make it so the residents are not paying a 2% raise everywhere in their town. This is very important to me. One thing I've learned is when you win an election, you don't win anything. What you do is you win the opportunity, and you win the ability to have a chance to help people. That's what I'm looking for. So I would ask for everybody for their support. Thank you.
Mike, Mark's weight. Good evening, good evening. In the 20 years that I've lived here, I've really enjoyed the sense of place that we have in East Greenwich. I think all of us have our favorite part, pain, hardest feeling. It might be going to the Summer Zen concert. For me, I love to sit at the top of the stage during the sound of the water. And what I've tried to do is put together my interest in the town and the things I love about the town, and combine that with my commitment to community service. And the way I've done that is by getting involved in local government. At present time, I serve on the town council, and it's been a busy two years on the council. We've refinanced town debt, the same $450,000 in interest payment. We have renegotiated contracts with all five of our labor unions, and now have three-year agreements that are now completed. We have started a designated fund to deposit money for the healthcare benefits for the town retirees and its part of our contract for obligation. And we also have now put together a six-year capital fund, so it allows us to budget more smoothly. We're going to do this here with the town's financial need. The areas of recreation, we require what used to be the Harris Marina, which will be available for the town for passive recreation. We've secured grants to set up a kayak launch and refurbished a boat ramp down at the... We also have opened up a new cross-country trail, a nature trail behind the high school. So a lot of things going on in terms of recreation. And on Main Street, the town has designated a moneyless budget and secured grants to include lighting, street skate, crosswalks, trees, tree improvements. So I ask for your vote so that I can have the opportunity to continue for the next two years tackling your challenges of being a former town councilman. Thank you.
We've got this common theme going on tonight. All of us are pretty much from East Greenwich, and we love this town. I spent most of my life living in East Greenwich, and I graduated from the high school, I hate to say it, many, many years ago. When I had my friends here that I run for town council, it's always the same saying, these folks. Well, that's correct, you're doing it, and you'll be a great councilman, but I never pictured you going into politics. And I can say, I'm not doing this to go into politics, and I have no political aspirations. Actually, the politicians of my family and my two sons that are here tonight, Jake and Cole, who was elected president and vice president at Holmhill School. Good job, boys. So why am I running for town council? Right now, I do have the opportunity and the time to give back, and what a better way to give back to the town I grew up in. A town that our family loves, a great community already. We have great schools. But most importantly, this is our life. Some of my experiences, I hate to say this because, again, it dates me. I have over 30 years of business experience. We actually opened our first off-track bedding store right here in East Greenwich, Rhode Island. That's off-track bedding. We sold mattresses, there wasn't any gambling. Just to make that clear. That was when I graduated from high school. We grew that business to 14 stores over the next 15 years. In running a small business, you are very, the budgets are tight, and you have to wear many, many hats. You have to run the marketing department, the sales department. All I can say is that I've had, again, my business experience, I do all the business right now. It's successful, and I honestly believe in the people that know me that I have great experience, I'll make great decisions. If I do have the honor of me, I will have to make sure that everything I do is physically responsible. I will always put the residents' town in first on all matters that are brought forth at town council.
Good evening. I want to first thank the East Greenwich News, the Pendulum, the East Greenwich Chamber of Commerce for putting this together, as well as New England Tech. My name is Sean Todd, and I'm running for reelection for town council. Boy, two years goes quick. After serving the town since November 2014, I've gotten to know the intimate details on how it functions, where some inefficiencies still lie, and where we're very strong. My overall consensus is the town is in one grade by strong leaders, starting with our town manager, Tom Floyd. I also want to point out, we had a terrific town council with great chemistry. I had the honor to work with my friend, Susie Yangi, someone I've grown to truly admire, Mark Schwager, and Bill Stone, whose opinions were critical in deciding so many town issues. And the man who ran East Greenwich over the last 12 years as town council president, and my mentor, Michael Azus. So before I came on council, we were facing five tough union contracts where the starting ask was over 5% and the threat to moving towards binding arbitration. After, we all five took the same modest 2% degrees and avoided arbitration. Before I was on council, we had debt service at rates that were higher than the market, and after we refinanced our debt, as Mark said, saving the taxpayers $422,000. Specifically personally, I spirited the rollout of the new town website and the mobile app, which will be launching in the spring. I launched the Town of East Greenwich Facebook page. The app has over 1,000 followers to help the communication and transparency between county government. Have you noticed there's valet on Main Street? I spearheaded that to ease traffic on the weekends and keep the restaurants flourishing. Lastly, I successfully lobbied the Rhode Island Department of Transportation and secured $300,000 in grant money to help pave Main Street. Since I was elected two years ago, the counties are moving in the right direction. I've been a part of that momentum while fighting to keep the tax rate as low as possible and keeping up town services as we expect. I hope to continue to serve East Greenwich with my growing roots, which includes my wife, my kindergartner, and our newest addition, who just turned four months old.
Great, thanks, Sean. Each candidate will again have two minutes to answer the same question, and that is a question that came up quite often in the discussion and submissions, which was, "What is the biggest challenge facing the town today, and how would you address it?" So in this round, Patrick, you're gonna go first, and we're gonna come back around to Nino. Two minutes. One minute. Okay.
The biggest challenge facing our town is, I think it's gonna be the same for everybody who says that, it's containing costs while providing a high level of service to the citizens of the town. And the main component of those costs is our school system. East Greenwich is well-known for its schools, well-regarded for its schools. We have to get the schools moving forward and well-funded. Now is not the time to step back on that promise to our children. Those schools are the basis of the town, and we have to protect them. We need to investigate other sources of revenue. There's been proposals to put solar panels on top of the school. At least that's based out. That's a source of revenue, it's a learning opportunity for the kids, and it takes some of the burden off the taxpayers. Thank you.
One minute.
Yeah, I think the biggest challenge that's facing the town is people are evolving. As the town council, we've kept our tax increases below 2% for the last several years. That does not equate to what your tax bill is like. I personally know that my tax increases over the past two years have risen 23.5%. That is not sustainable. We see families moving into town. They educate their children here and take advantage of our school system, which is the best on the state. But when their child turns 17, they move because they no longer afford to live. So we are losing part of an essential element in our community, which is our seniors. And we love our senior citizens. We'd like them to be able to stay here. So yes, we need to attract more businesses, and the Town of East Greenwich uses our commercial tax rate and our residential tax rate at the same level. So that should attract more businesses. In fact, we actually got a new business into town based upon the fact that our commercial tax rate is the same. So we are working towards trying to bring more businesses and alleviating taxes.
Thanks, Sue. Biggest challenge facing the town, how would you address it?
Even though my dad's not here, he's still here. So it's easy to, you know, echo what Sue said, affordability and stuff. You know, I work real hard to make sure that my daughter's gonna go to school here. But I think another real issue facing the town is real similar. It comes down to constant communication. How available is the town to work for a tax payer? And I think something that we've all discussed and were, you know, decided we were gonna work really hard on is increasing communication and accessibility to help have the town have as much input into these decisions that are gonna be made. Instead of, you know, 19 hours going up at a financial meeting, it would be nice to have a lot more people be involved. And I think we have some really creative ideas to bring that, you know, stuff to life. I really look forward to doing it, and, you know, the team of folks that I'm working with, they talk about some real innovative ways, and I'd love your vote on November 8th.
Ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you, and I agree. I think the biggest challenge that we're facing in our town right now is our lack of community involvement, especially at the younger age gap. I think that we look around, and I personally, as an incredibly involved high schooler, hardly knew there was, you know, a town council election. I remember going in and voting for five random people last election and I think that you have to look at that and think that there's something wrong with that. I think that our community needs to be more involved. It's not just our parents and our grandparents who are involved in our community, but the children. And the children, we want to come back after they've gone off to college. And making sure that their family's staying here, that their kids after them come back to our community. I think it's incredibly important that we get more word out to each and every single student, each and every young adult, and make sure each and every family is coming out to all of our events, coming out to our town meetings and making sure that they're taking a part and being involved in our community. Thank you.
Like I said in my opening, I think taxes are the biggest problem here. The increase of two percent every year, we can't keep on forcing it to go higher and higher. We need to bring businesses in. We have some dormitories that we can build, they look beautiful. That's with eight hundred new students coming into this town that are living here. How's that going to affect our police? How's that going to affect our fire? How much more money is that going to cost us? I don't know the answer to that yet. That's something we have to be ready for because if it's more policing, more fire, that means we need to spend more money. The only way we can get more money is by bringing businesses into the town. We need to contact the governor's office. They have a department that brings businesses into the state. We need to be in and get with them and talk to them and tell them, this is what we have in East Greenwich. What can you find for our town that are right here? If we don't get more businesses in here, then our taxes don't end up. So we need to increase the business. Thank you.
Great, thanks, Mark.
Our biggest challenge is going to be maintaining twenty-first century town services and education and our infrastructure in this situation where ninety percent of our revenue comes from property taxes. That's tough for our town. On the expense side, we're going to have to be innovative. For example, we opened up police firing range so that the police could train on-site and saved us $28,000 in overtime. But some increases in expenses are baked in in our labor contracts and our healthcare policies. So expenses are going to have to be innovative and creative. On the revenue side, the waterfront may be a source of economic development. We actually commissioned a waterfront study to be done to see if we can develop any additional resources there. Main Street, it's mostly our meals taxes. You've had to see the state increase in the revenues through meal taxes. We're now collecting over $500,000 a year in meal taxes. We have some root and grow data. And then our Route Two corridor, which our planning and our comprehensive town plan is dedicated for business development, mostly white industry offers, making high-desi- uh, everybody.
Great, thanks, Mark.
I think the number one issue is definitely affordability and I think everyone I ever talked to says the same thing. We're not going to raise our taxes, right? And how you do that, that is a huge challenge. Either you reduce costs, which I would challenge every department in how we run and operate the town, to make sure we are operating with efficiencies and doing everything we can to cut their costs. I'd agree with the others. We need to increase the tax base and it can't be all on the burden of homeowners and we need to really look at businesses that fit the community that we can move and get in here. It's going to be a big town. If we don't do that, taxes will go up. That will not be working for us.
Great, thanks, Sean.
We have a real dilemma and it's going to be hard. It's some thirteen dollars out of everyone's rooms, tax dollars, the tax rate's twenty-four bucks, thirteen of that goes to the school. So that's the majority of where our money or tax dollars are going to. On the town side, I know that we've spent countless hours going through every department for hours and hammering them on a line-by-line item and there's not a lot of room on, you know, on the underside of the town. I think that we have to be innovative on this waterfront. That's one of the reasons why we all believe in this waterfront study, to try to bring open-up the bay to more commerce and more, you know, more people in the line. That's one of the reasons I moved to this town was just because of the access to water and it's not really there. I think that this study that we're doing can have a big impact on.
Great, thanks, Mark. Now we're going to move on to the next.
And I'm sorry, I've got a stand as I come to you. I'm going to sum this all up with one word, it's called value. And you want to build value in the town, you're going to have to do it two ways. You're going to drive revenue growth, but we're going to have to look at cost. I've turned companies around, I've come up with very creative ways to drive revenue. Always go listen and act on all ideas that make sense, but also you're going to make some tough decisions on cost. You're not going to get everything you want, there are trade-offs. You've got to trade dollars back and forth. I am a taxpayer as well and I don't like to see my bill go up, but I do love the town and I like what it offers. So how do you maintain that environment and how do you maintain the fiscal responsibility that we've got to have? So, again, I use the word value to sum it all up and I believe that that is our biggest issue.
Now, we're going to the next round where I'm going to take a question out of the poll and go to Sue.
It's like Mr. Merrick. I don't get to.
Question to Sue, in this round again, each candidate will answer a question that comes out of the, that comes out of the poll for one minute. Question that came out of the poll for one minute. If one of the candidates feels that they have really something to add or they wanted to respond, they can use one of their two appeals. So here's the question, we got this one a lot. How should the town council work to bring new businesses to town, to help offset rising property taxes, to make up the bulk of town revenue?
Okay, I think one of the most significant things that this current town council has done is kept our commercial property tax rate the same as residential property tax rates. And that encourages businesses to come. Most of the other towns in East Greenwich have a higher residential, have a higher commercial property tax rate. So we are a very attractive area to come in and set up your business. The second thing is, we did have a visit from the Commerce Secretary, Steve Empire, came down to award us a $32,400 grant to improve Main Street. It was a perfect opportunity to the town council's double president that he read his ear, show him around Main Street and show him what East Greenwich has to offer. He was very, very impressed. Of course, I pushed that we needed the state to pave Main Street and that is our economic engine in town. And if we improved and paved Main Street, made more improvements, we would attract yet again more businesses to town.
Thanks, Sue. Nino wants to weigh in on that one.
I would. I've actually started a business in East Greenwich. I did it ten years ago. I can be an absolute testimonial to anybody wanting to come in the town and do this, grow a business and start a business. I've done it in large companies, but more globally here. So I think I can, I think I can help in that area. Again, raising revenue, reducing costs, you can help on both ends.
Great, thank you. Andrew, Andrew wants to weigh in as well.
So, I've had a really unique opportunity, started with the board directors of the Chamber for Commerce. You know, I think what Sue said is right, we need to really focus on our economic centers and we're not just talking about Main Street. As the movement's happening in our backyard, we have an opportunity to capture a tremendous amount of revenue. We have some real creative ideas that the board is talking about right now. To capture, like I said, we have eight hundred students a year. That's a huge population increase for this little, you know, state-sized town. And I think by having some attractive, you know, offerings to offer these students and the faculty, you can create a real synergy between the, you know, student teacher population and the business environment in East Greenwich. And I think we can do it in a really innovative way. And I would look forward to being able to do that.
Great, Andrew, thanks for that. And you would be the person who will be answering the next question, so back to back. The town has recently awarded a $120,000 grant from the state to make improvements to the waterfront, including a kayak launch at Scallow Town Park and updates to the town dock. What else should the town do to improve access to the waterfront, especially since public parking is limited?
Great question. So, for anybody who knows me, you know that I have a very special place in my heart for downtown East Greenwich, the waterfront facility, or the Eugene Riviera, can be called. So, I think it comes down to the accessibility and that's what Sean was saying in terms of how people can utilize that. I think it's going to attract a lot of youth, I think it's going to attract a lot of folks from a lot of students from the surrounding areas to come utilize that. I think you also said parking, that's the main issue regarding that. And I think we really need to dig deep into how to make that accessible and easy enough to get to where people would want to access it. And I think we could use that money to create a fashion to discover ways to really find a parking spot.
Great, thanks, Andrew, for that.
So one of the things that, like, when I first got on council is that, again, I moved here because of the accessibility to the bay and when I went to go try to find out how to get there, I was brought around by the town manager to figure out where these rights ways were, I didn't even know what a right of way was until I toured them all. And so one of the things that we tried to do is we tried to, like, if you've seen Barbados Playground, which is over by the water, we had, came up with a plan to try to have the land cleared, put in like a beachy type area for dogs to get in out of the water or whatever. And so one of the innovative ways to do it cheaply was with goats. And we found a company that we were about to move forward with and have goats clear the whole area beginning this construction and then we got awarded this, we put money third grant towards the revitalization of the waterfront, so we put it on hold. But I think it's extremely important that it's worked on.
Great, thanks, Sean. Next up is Yash. Yash, your question is, many small businesses struggle to succeed on Main Street. How should the town help small businesses thrive on Main Street?
Well, I mean, I think that I can relate to them, I can relate to this question just through my own experience. A lot of the times, you know, my friends and I, high schoolers, we're out in the town or trying to decide what to do, we stray away from Main Street. And the reason for that is because I think that Main Street has become something that people don't consider to be part of this beautiful East Greenwich aesthetic. People aren't looking at Main Street anymore and thinking, wow, this is a place that I really want to go to. We have dilapidated trash cans attached to poles, we have cracked sidewalks. And I think that one of the ways we can really help small businesses succeed is by improving the advertisement towards Main Street, by making sure that people know that Main Street is a beautiful part of East Greenwich. And by making sure that we make Main Street itself a more beautiful place by improving those sidewalks, by making sure that we have real trash cans, by making sure that there's more parking that's more accessible to people, making sure that people can actually access these small businesses and help them succeed.
Great, thanks, Yash. Sure, Sue, go ahead.
I'd like to weigh in to what Yash had said. We have started several main initiatives on Main Street to make it more attractive. One of them is a $32,500 grant that we love, we're putting in new sidewalks, tree grades to improve the businesses' appearances and to make it look better. So I think we're moving in the right direction to make sure that businesses are happy. A lot of businesses belong to the Chamber of Commerce, which does an outstanding job. The Main Street Association also is promoting the trick-or-treating with the Chamber. So the young families will go down there and trick-or-treat their children. Once people go down to Main Street, we have been able to get $500,000 from the fabulous restaurants on Main Street. So go down there, go eat, it's fabulous, it's wonderful. Drink in a few years.
Thanks, Sue, thanks for that. Mike, Joel, Mike is up next. And I'm going to say a band for the end because everyone can answer. Mike, people often move to East Greenwich for the school, then move out as soon as their youngest child finishes high school. How should we make East Greenwich attractive to people without children or those whose children are ready?
Well, I mentioned this in my opening statement and the main thing is, I walk through the streets and I see people going, like, I don't want to move out of East Greenwich when my kids graduate, but I don't understand why I'm going to live in a house with three bedrooms and pay all these taxes. And it comes down to the first one, we need to expand the tax base. I know I'm repeating myself, but that is the answer. We need to bring business into this town. Business that will pay taxes, business that will pay tangible taxes. If we don't increase our base, we all have to pay one tax. And then people like myself, ten, fifteen years, they'll have to make a decision. Do I want to stay in this town even though my children don't want to live there or do I want to move to another town where it's a lot cheaper? I don't want to leave East Greenwich. I want to stay here. I love it here, I coached every team in the world down here, I love the kids, I love everything about this town. We need to expand business here. We need to get Route Two to have more offices and increase the tax base. If we don't do that, we will all pay more taxes. It's just a simple math. Thank you.
Great, thanks, Mike. Next up is Mark Schwager. Mark?
Here's a question for you. There will be a $5 million roadwork bond on the November ballot and voters approved a $2 million bond for roadwork in 2014. Even if the November bond passes, Public Works Director Joe Dort says he'd need millions, in quotation marks, more to do all repairs, repairing and sidewalk work immediately. How should the town continue to pay for muted infrastructure improvements?
So many roads, so little money. I think this challenge with the roads also is significant to so many other discussions about improving Main Street, improving the waterfront, the rights of way. How do you prioritize your money? It's only a limited amount. The roads are a major challenge to us. It's going to be an ongoing challenge to keep up with the roads, the sidewalks. Main Street alone, there are, I don't know the exact number, can you sue or Todd, Todd can help me, about twenty-seven handicap access points that need to be brought up to ADA compliance. And it costs several million dollars just for the handicap access. So a continued challenge. We have to maintain our infrastructure. I support the road bond, the $5 million road bond that should get us through the next three to five years and then we're going to be probably coming back again with more infrastructure maintenance.
Mark, thanks for that. Sean, Baron, go ahead.
So based on, nobody wants to spend money, but you do have to invest in infrastructure and our roads need to order. Right now, historically, it's the best plan to actually have a bond, the mortgage interest rates. Things will line up next year where I think we're dropping, what, almost $970,000 debt service. So if you look at it from a business standpoint, to be able to borrow money the way we can get the money, it's a perfect opportunity. We do have to invest in the infrastructure. We should all vote for a bond.
So I'm also in favor of this road bond because we, the town has never fully recovered from the 2008 collapse and so when we, when 2008 came around, we had to pull back. And so one of the things we pulled back on was roads, unfortunately. And so, you know, I think that we need, we're at a time now, a sweet spot where the interest rates are so low, we just refinanced a lot of our sewer debt in town and now is the right time to take this bond out because money's so cheap. So I support the bond.
Sean, thanks. I just want to remind you, that was your second and last weigh-in or two, just so you're not surprised. So, next up for Sean Baron, the following question. Sean, annual tax increases have averaged just under two percent over the past five years according to town statistics. Per state law, the tax rate can be increased up to four percent. Under what scenario would you agree to a tax rate increase of three or four percent, if any?
I would hope that I would never have to agree to that and I would look at, like we talked about earlier, making sure and challenge our town to operate as efficient as possible on all departments and do everything we can not to take any tax increase.
Great, thank you. Sure, Nino, I just wanted to second the last.
Yeah, you feel aware, you know, the two percent, you've got to look at it this way. Average growth in the United States here on the year for the last eight years has been just around two percent, below two percent. We've got to do, and I think this council and our council and the legalizing leadership has done a very good job. You know, I know Mike said before, geez, I hate to have two percent of the year. But, you know, now you see the, now you see the trade-off. The trade-off is we have to go for a $5 million bond. So keeping the taxes low, you have to sacrifice the infrastructure and the projects over bond. So these are the trade-offs that we have to make. I believe as long as we keep that rate below the rate of inflation, meaning your wage inflation, that's kind of a starting point. I don't know if we're going to get to zero, but these are part of the trade-offs we have to make.
Thanks, Nino. Sean Todd down there at the end, I just wanted to, this question is for you. A former gas station property at the corner of First and Main, the main point of entry to downtown East Greenwich, has been vacant for several years now. What should the town council do to help find a long-term tenant that would enhance the downtown area?
So it's funny, I have a beautiful sign there, so I know all about that property intimately and we were asked this the last debate as well. It is like the entrance to East Greenwich and it's a, it's a tough spot and it's, it is what it is. We, as a council, have, you know, we can't force any business to change pricing of what they were asking for the property. And I believe in capitalism and I think the price dropped to a point where someone else I know purchased the property and it's going to be an upscale used car lot. It's not exactly what I think the town planner had in mind. I spoke to her actually this morning about that issue and she said a bunch of other successful companies came in and put their names in the hat for that spot and nothing could work out. So I don't really know. I kind of leave it up to the free market system to figure out what's going to go there. But we see on Main Street all the time, businesses open up, we keep giving them fiduciary licenses. Things open up, they close, they open up, they close. But that, through cigar bars and, you know, like, things, you have to leave it up to the free markets and figure out what that's issue.
Thanks, Sean. Now I want to move on to Nino. Nino, here's a question for you. Nino, here's a question for you. Our host tonight, New England Tech, is currently building its first dormitory, which will house 300 students, it sounds like it's going to be up to 800 at some point. What should the town council do to ensure that our quality of life is not negatively affected by the change in pace of New England Tech?
You know, I actually lived in, in fact, I was in a planning war four years ago in the New England Tech project. Again, I'm sorry, I can't say out the clothes. And I actually thought it was a great project for the town. The council did a very good job getting payments from the, from the school. I think it's a great asset to the town. I mean, you can think about what this was before, it's walking in, it's beautiful, it's upstairs, it's in classrooms, and it used to be a free market. So I think it's a great asset, they allow us to use the facilities. I don't, you know, I don't, I don't foresee New England Tech being a bad citizen of East Greenwich. I love the energy that a college, that a school brings to a town. And I, you know, we'll obviously make sure that they are good citizens, but I see New England Tech as a great asset, and I actually look forward to spending some time with these people.
Great, thanks. Mike, second, oh, this is your question.
New England Tech, it could be a great partnership between East Greenwich and the public. But we also have to stand, this piece of property right now is valued at $50 million. Their taxes should be 1.3 million per year. The state is paying East Greenwich $419,000. Now, that's still good money coming in, but that's not the full amount that this school's worth, which is fine, because there's certain things they can do, if you like, shoot their fields, there's a lot of things that we can get together with them. But for them to be a good partner, we have to make sure that they're putting their part in. They have 800 new students coming in here, that's more police, that's more fire. They are going to be a great, it doesn't mean that they're not going to be a good partner, but we need a council that will sit there, talk to them, and keep track of them, and make sure they're paying their part. And if they're not, they could be a great, I agree, I think it could be a great marriage. But we need a council that will make sure that it is, and not just turn a blind eye. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Yeah, Sean. New England Tech has invested, in phase one of their development, they invested $120 million in the town, into their campus, and now in phase two, they're building out their dorm and a new student center, another $120 million. They've invested almost a quarter of a billion dollars in their infrastructure area. And this could be a tremendous asset for the town. When they were first coming to town, the town commissioned a study from a URI business professor, and the consensus of the study was that communities that are linked to the university, it is a positive economic factor, it raises home values, it stimulates commerce. So this is a very, potentially very big area for us to expand in. As far as expenses, we have been modeling a lot of our experience with New England Tech by Smithfield's contracts with College Bryant College. And there is a way to work out calls to fire service, police service, to be able to.
Great, thank you, Mark. Jerry, go ahead.
I think New England Tech will be wonderful later, and I think it's a great opportunity for the entirety of the town. I think the danger that it poses to have a university in the midst of such a small town is the one I saw when I attended the University of Nashville. It's the growth that comes with it, because right now, this is where New England Tech is, and this land is off the tax rules, but I still think it's a valuable asset. But the problem is that they begin to grow beyond where they are now. We need a long-term plan, even developing route two, to make sure that that land is being used by viable, strong businesses. So when New England Tech seeks to grow, there's something there to buffer that continued growth.
Great, thanks for that. Last question before we go to the summary round. Finding parking on Main Street is the only way. What should the town council do to find parking on Main Street?
The problem that you run into, obviously, is that there's quite an amount of parking down there for the businesses that exist. It needs to be a very long-term plan. This has been a problem, believe it or not, since I was not old enough to drive, and I don't think I'm going to go anywhere. It just, you're taking too much valuable land that isn't in the market. Some ideas would be repositioning the parking spaces in a different way, trying to expand Main Street slightly to do that, using some of the land that's not being occupied to open up to parking. But it is a very difficult problem, that needs a very long-term solution.
This is part of my opening statement.
Sure, if somebody wants to give up their, their town.
I'll give it up. So, yes, so it is a big problem. And so the town did a traffic study, and they studied the traffic on Main Street, so this has been looked at already. They said that people will walk further to the entrance of a Home Depot than they will fill out Monster Is Run, which is, which is a fact. So that's the reason why I took it upon myself to assist businesses and all the restaurants on Main Street. And if you notice, they didn't have valet, then they had valet, and the valet things were up on top of the corners, on the sidewalks. We had them now move down onto the streets, then we were able to give them a combed-off spot. So that was one of the initiatives I took on myself to try to solve that exact problem.
Thanks. Sue, you do have some time.
I do have some time.
Go right ahead.
I'd like to echo also what Mr. Todd has said. The town has actively looked at the problem of parking on Main Street, and as he said, you know, a lot of us will walk a mile or at the mall to get to parking. We like the convenience when we go and allow Monster Is Run to park in front and walk into the store. So there are some empty lots that are available, and we're actively negotiating with who can use that to turn that into parking on Main Street. Just to make sure that the businesses stay on Main Street, that the customers have easy access to it. So it's an area that we have actively pursued and look at, and will continue to do so.
Great, thanks, Sue. So that concludes that round, and so now we're going to go on to the final round, which will reflect the important skill as a candidate and as a public servant of prioritizing and summarizing. So I'm not looking at anyone in particular. But, so, starting from right.
I want to say thank you. I was the one the first who raised the concern about the speeding of Main Street, and people weren't stopping in the crosswalk. Thank you for putting up those little vertical signs that I proposed some time ago. So whoever was responsible, the town council, the town manager, thank you for putting up those little vertical signs.
So now what I want to do is, I want to move on to the next round, and I think that the first one-minute closing statement is good save.
Sorry, it's with Andrew.
Andrew, okay, sorry about this, okay.
I'll vote first.
It's all right.
So as tonight comes to a close, you know, I want to thank you all again for participating with the great exercise of the mayor's office. I hope you gained some insight into us, not just as candidates, but all of us, I feel, really truly do love this town, and we want to keep East Greenwich the best place to live. So no matter what happens on November 8th, I'm honored, you know, to share this experience with my fellow candidates, and I look forward to continuing my own participation in this town, our town, the one that is so special, the one that we love for many years to come. Again, my name's Andy Goach, and I can't wait to be your next town councilman.
Yash, you got a minute?
All right, well, once again, ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to thank you, I'd like to thank everyone who came out, made this possible, made it possible for us to share our opinions. And I really, I'd like to, you know, looking at all the people out in this crowd, this is really what makes, I think, you know, East Greenwich the wonderful town that it is, that we have lots of people willing to come out to take part. And I think that our goal looking forward should just be to make sure that we get that community involvement up, to make sure that people keep coming to events like this, to make sure that people still want their voices to be heard. And I hope that, you know, I've opened your eyes to the age gap in East Greenwich and in the government and in East Greenwich town politics even. And I hope that you guys will be a little more accepting, and I hope I have your support on November 8th. Thank you.
Yash, Mike Jorel.
Thank you. This is why I love living in East Greenwich. I would be proud of any one of us being a town councilman. I think everybody here is qualified, you have a lot of good choices. I told you why I wanted to be your councilman. It's basically, I want the opportunity to help spread the tax base and make it larger. That is my main issue. I want my taxes to go down a little selfish, I think everybody else is too, but everybody I talk to wants to lower taxes. I just ask, if you can give me the opportunity on November 8th. Thank you.
Mark Schwerer.
Thank you, our hosts, for having this lively event tonight. And I wanted to thank my wife, Pat, who's here to lend some moral support to me. And thank you all for coming. This is the kind of event that I really enjoy, because it is the community coming out, coming together, learning about town issues, asking questions, and ultimately, your vote will decide what this town looks and feels like over the next couple of years. It'll be the roads that you drive on, the kids you send, the schools you send your kids to, and the police and fire who provide the public safety. So stay involved, the local government, please vote for me to be on the town council. And after this forum, I'll be staying around. Please come up and introduce yourself, and I'll be happy to talk to you about any of your questions, town councilman, or anything. Thank you.
Again, I want to thank East Greenwich News and everyone for coming out tonight. This is quite an experience, being a first time. And kudos to everyone here. This is, I'm learning quickly, this is a huge commitment and undertaking, to serve on town council and the school committee. And we are lucky in this town to have the quality of these people out here that are willing to put the time out to run for office. I want to thank the East Greenwich Republican Town Committee for their backing and support. They've made this experience for a first time be incredible. Again, my experience, I have a lot of it, and I'll definitely make the right decisions financially. And anything that comes across, I am very proud. The residents first, do what's best for the town first. And I hope to get a vote on November 8th. Thank you.
So thank you, everyone for coming, your ideas about how to continue excellence in East Greenwich. For my closing, I was going to read a list of things, what I intended to do in my second term, but instead I just want to tell you a funny story. So being on council takes endless hours away from your family, my wife, and my two sons. But it all makes it worth it when I take my five-year-old son Alex to soccer or T-ball on weekends, because we get to drive around and talk about the town of East Greenwich, ask him what he thinks the town needs, and his answers are always right on. Every open space needs another playground. Every vacant corner needs another ice cream shop. And he's always good for the daddy, we need to plant some more trees. So this is what makes me proud, giving them. So that's why I'm back for reelection, my son Alex, my newborn Will, and for all your kids. I want to continue greatness, I've been a part of it, humbly ask for your vote on November 8th, keep East Greenwich the place to live, work, and enjoy. Thank you.
I'm a resident, I'm a business owner, and I'm a dad of East Greenwich. I love the parades, I love the Summer Zen concert, in fact, I've been involved in that for many years. I think it's a great place to live. I've got a lot of life experiences, business experiences, that I believe can help the town. And if you want me to serve, if you give me that permission, I'll vote for your vote on November 8th. Just look me up.
I would also thank everyone for coming tonight, it is great to see such a large crowd here. Also, my campaign staff is over there, a lot of the girls that I coached. I want to thank my wife for allowing me to do this, I want to thank T. Young for sitting through most of tonight's presentation. I am from East Greenwich, I want the best for this town. You've been a part of me for a very long time, you will be a part of me going forward, I know that. And I just want the opportunity to serve you. And I thank you for your consideration, and I thank you for your vote on November 8th.
I'm taking you all home now. I too would like to thank Elizabeth, M.L., Kathy, and I.T., David, and the Chamber of Commerce who organized this, organizing this event, most importantly, all of you that came out, it was a horrible evening, so it's fabulous that you all came out. As stated in my opening statement, there are a lot of new initiatives, many continuing initiatives that the present town council has worked on. I'd like to continue working on that to improve the climate in town and to serve the public's best interests. So if you want to, you can follow me on Facebook, at Re-Elect Suzanne P. C. Yang. Or any questions and concerns you have, you can reach me at SC Yang at East Greenwich. Thanks.
Thanks, Sue. Tonight, we're going to have a brief break, and then we're going to have the forum for the school committee candidates. Thank you.